All right, it's seven o'clock. This meeting started. This meeting is being recorded, audio, video. And anybody else's video recording or recording this, please let us know. Anybody else? Okay, so please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craig Reese here. Charlotte Crane here. Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Here.
Dr. Eberwine?
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Dr. Jelinas?
Here.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Ms. Ladizori?
Ms. Lounsbury?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here. We have a quorum. Okay, first up is any response from the audience. The audience, anybody who would like to speak?
Oh, hi, I'm Maddie Bailey. I'm a sophomore at Wacona and I want to talk about the issue of the required gym classes at our school. I'm someone, I take all honors classes, I'm a preseason athlete, and I really want to take AP Music Theory next year. It's only offered once every other year and next year's the only year I'll be able to take it. And I also want to take a modern band class. I took it this year, it's very important to me. It's a performance class and it's the only non-academic class I take, but I'm not able to take both at the same time because of my required gym class. And I think that it should be available for students who are athletes to be able to be exempt from that gym class because they're getting their physical education through their sports that they're doing. And I think that it's unfair to those people to require for them to have a gym class because it limits their opportunities to take advantage of all of the classes that are offered at Wacona.
Thank you, Maddie.
Thank you.
Great points, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online, please? Okay, so first up is Student Fair, is Aiden's with us tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you for making the trip down.
Yeah, of course. Well, it's beautiful out here. So this week is our thing again, I gave a presentation about that last year, but this week was different because, Mrs. Lounsbury, actually, we had a summit at school yesterday for this group period in the masters called MVP. And Windsor is one of the pilot towns where they're trying to get more funds to work on environmental issues that are like pertinent to younger people who are going to have more to lose to the climate. And the summit yesterday was about hearing our ideas, what we want to see happen in the future, especially at Windsor, and eventually the surrounding towns. So we talked, we had a presentation about our environmental quo at school and some of the things that we want to see, such as like animal crossings, there are culverts in the road, and things they can put money on. So that was very nice to be able to share our opinions. Tomorrow is the Shakespeare Company field trip down to Lee, which is going to be seniors and juniors through the English department. Lobby day is on Tuesday in Boston, and that's going to be another event that students are going to go to for the environment quo. There's a circus in Iverville in Congress right now that students are looking to, throughout Wacona, they're worried about. It's on legislation, it's about protecting circus animals and their rights. And through these legislations, they're going to have more protection when like the circus comes through, our area will see better protection for animals. And then the Costa Rica trip over vacation, a lot of students did enjoy that, it was very nice to see people having fun outside of school, it was a very, very experience. And the first track meet was on, at Wacona on Tuesday, and it was just very cool to see a lot of schools complimented our track, how like well it was put together at the, and they saw, I mean, some people are talking about the new plans for the concession stand, people are excited about that. And Into the Woods was very successful, I'm sure most of you were there, that was very nice to see freshmen, seniors, and even middle schoolers involved in the theater, that was very good. I think we came super close to selling out on two of them, I sold out on the third, so that was great. Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. All right, first up, ready to vote?
Okay, so we have ones listed here that have all been pre-approved. Anybody have any questions?
Do donations and grants, acceptance of grants?
Being resolved, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the grants as recommended by the District Treasurer, listed below, five thousand dollars Berkshire Planning Commission Rural Health Grant, thirty thousand dollars from Barbara and Gunther Stolman Fund of the Berkshire Deconic Community Foundation, a hundred thousand dollars DESI High Quality Instructional Materials Purchase Grant.
Second. Motion in second, any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Approval of the Wacona Regional High School French Club fundraising event.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves a fundraiser of selling Popcornopolis, thank you very much, fundraiser, which is popcorn, in April to raise money for the French Club activities.
Second. Motion in a second, any questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Sorry?
Just to be clear, the popcorn is sold like outside of school, correct? Not in the, in the high school?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can't do that, right? Anymore, you can't.
Well, it depends on our, it's dependent on our wellness policy, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up is acceptance.
If we have somebody online, we have to roll call.
There are members online.
There are no members.
I thought, I thought we did.
Okay, fine.
They're no members.
He's trying to slop through the sound. He's trying to slop through the sound, we'll hope he gets those cases.
I didn't check just before we started, but I was, but thank you for making sure, better, thanks, sorry. So the next up is acceptance of donation for the National Youth Tobacco Survey, NYTS.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the donation from NYTS in the amount of five hundred dollars to the Wacona Regional High School Gifts and Donations revolving account as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Second. All right, motion in a second, any questions, concerns on this one? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Acceptance of the scholarship donations.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the seven hundred dollar donation for the Zesfi Scholarship from Kelly and Daniel Zesfi as recommended by the District Treasurer.
Second. Motion in a second, any questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Secretary's report. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Same vote.
Second. Motion in a second, any questions on this? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Just for starters, I wanted to acknowledge what Aiden said around our facilities and some of the support that you've given us and the community support, just speaking of the new school and that, the theater and the auditorium, Into the Woods was amazing. And those students really, like if you could really pull together talent and highlight that beautiful auditorium and take advantage of all that it has to offer in terms of the audio and the visual, they did it, it was beautiful, it was incredible. And every time I go in there, I appreciate the process, the support that we all went through to actually have a new high school. And then following that, the track out in the back, I was out there today, I was out there for another meet, we do have, like it's, you know, Pittsfield is asking to use our track while they fix theirs, Graylock is hoping to get one, they're using our track. There was a unified meet today, we had another meet the other day where there was, I don't know, it's standing room only, but there were, you could barely park. And it's, the facilities are beautiful. And to add to that, I did have another superintendent who reached out to me and said, you know, not only are your athletic facilities out here beautiful, how do you maintain them so beautifully? So I think it's worth all of you hearing this and knowing this because you're there voting for it, supporting it, but the students are living it and the community is living it and they're, from my standpoint, I'm hearing a lot of thank yous and appreciation for it. So I wanted to pass that along to all of you. The other thing I wanted to just talk about a little bit is the Student Opportunity Act. So the Student Opportunity Act is a component of Chapter Seventy, and you always hear Greg and I talk about Chapter Seventy as a statewide funding source when we talk about the budget. In two thousand nineteen, the Student Opportunity Act was passed as an added component of Chapter Seventy, and the intention of it was that it would be where, where Chapter Seventy potentially fell short, this was going to be another source of funding, particularly for disparities for high need students. So high need students include students with disabilities, it includes students with poverty, includes students that speak a second language. And, 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 you know, this, this is a statewide determination, there's, for the first, I would say, and Greg can correct me on this, but there's a minimum per pupil contribution. So if you've been listening to things like the governor's budget and as it goes to House Ways and Means, something about the Student Opportunity Act is coming up, whether it's fully funded, or if the funding per student has gone up, it's proposed to go up. However, that's what's called the minimum per pupil contribution. So for a couple of years, we received the minimum per pupil contribution. Since that time, our demographics have changed and we are, I would say, probably fully funded when it comes to that, and that, again, it's based on our demographics. One of the components of the Student Opportunity Act is that we submit, and this is all districts in the Commonwealth, that we submit a plan. And the plan has to very specifically target closing the gap between the aggregate, all students and students with, in those high, in the students in those high needs groups. So we take a careful look at our data, we take a careful look at MTEST data, some of that is already in our strategic plan, some of it is in our district improvement plan and our school improvement plans. The difference between the Student Opportunity Act and those plans is the SOA is very specific to those students who are considered high needs. When we pull together that plan, one of the things that we have to do is we have to ensure that we are, we are thinking about very specific practices that the state has identified as evidence-based. So for example, increased opportunities for common planning time for teachers, so that would be what we call, you've heard us say PLCs, that thing, professional learning communities. For us, that would be PLCs. Things like supporting social and emotional well-being, hiring personnel that best support improved student performance, professional development needs, one of the things that you'll, one of the things also is providing high-quality curriculum resources for students. So you know, right now, we are actively pursuing a curriculum that is K through eight, a new K through eight ELA curriculum. Alongside that will come professional development on how to use that. So those are some of those things you're already hearing, that we're already doing. Another one would be, would be, would be expanding early education. So as you know, and I think I've mentioned in the past, and I haven't talked much about it, and that's because I haven't heard anything about it, is partnering with, with the state, with EEC, the Early Education Organization, to receive grant funding to expand preschool opportunities. We did apply for substantial grant, it is still in process. As of today, they said they are still looking at our application and considering us. So we are making every effort to do that. So those are sort of the big categories. Oh, one other one I don't want to forget to mention is really providing expertise in our teaching staff for students that need additional help with things like reading and math. So that's where you've heard us talk about reading interventionists and math interventionists, and wanting to expand and needing those services as we move forward. So without actually having to go through all the components of the plan, I did, I did put the plan in the packet, you will see a lot of those categories, and that's, that was a summary, you will see a lot of those categories in this plan. This is a three-year plan, I wrote it in collaboration with Mike, in collaboration with Greg, because you also have to attach it to funding. I will say that, again, this is over a three-year period, and this is sort of our commitment to making sure that we're serving our students in a way that, in a way that they provide high-quality opportunities for them. So I'm, I'm open to questions about it. I did receive, I did turn it into the state, it was due April first, that was turned into them, they did send us back, they told us it was approved, I don't know if there are different levels of approving it, it goes through a second-tier review, I don't know. I know that they initially said, everything that, that we've asked for, you have provided. But it does require school committee approval as well. So I put it in the packet, and it's for you to sort of ask questions or not, or ask for more time, or it's really up to you.
Any questions?
I have a few questions, they kind of build off of each other, so if you could bear with me. So in the packet, you had said that there were looking for two full-time school adjustment counselors. Are those, or what year timeframe are you looking to have those occur, and where, what schools are they occurring in?
So, I don't know if I, I don't know if I'm not asking necessarily for additional school adjustment counselors. The one I would hope to reinstate, to be honest with you, is the one that we just, because of Esser Funds, we, that was a position that was discontinued, and that was a shared position between Nessakiss and Wacona High School. We really should have a school adjustment counselor for, for every two-hundred-and-fifty students. So at the high school, I think, without that, we're short. So I'm hoping that through some grant funding, I can reinstate that. So that must, might have been part of that.
Preschool.
Oh, the idea also, I'm sorry, Liz, the other one was, was if we were able to get the preschool grant, to have a school adjustment counselor that was very specifically focused on early childhood and working with families with our preschoolers. So that would allow us to do that. I haven't heard yet, but, so those, those are the two, you're right. Okay. I wrote it a long time ago.
That's okay. So, given that you had those two positions, and in our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, we had cut to registered behavior technicians, can you just explain what the difference between those two positions are? Because I know they're, they sound similar to me.
Yeah, so a registered behavior technician, they would follow under our paraprofessional contract. School adjustment counselors have to have a very particular licensure, they, they really support, and Mike's going to jump in because I know he is, because.
He's jumping in.
If he's doing it, I can hear him over here. But, but it's real, school adjustment, I think of school adjustment counselors as our mental health experts in our community. You will hear different strands of thought that, that they don't necessarily provide therapy, but I will tell you, in so many emotional, social and emotional ways, they support our students.
Yeah, they're, I was just going to, they're, they're actually licensed clinical social workers, so they are, they're trained clinicians, and I, we shy away from saying that they're, they're, they don't do therapy, but they are, they're skilled clinicians. Our RBTs are also skilled, but the training is very different. And really, their, their job is to like monitor discreet trials and, and like monitor behavior plans, collect data and help with the analysis of that while also managing behavior, whereas the school adjustment counselors are more clinical.
And the credentials are different, so in order to be in our, in order to be a school, a licensed school adjustment counselor, you have to have four years of college and generally a master's degree. That is not the case for an RBT. It's more, you would have to graduate from high school and have another level of training, but it doesn't have to be college-level training. So it's a different level of expertise and training.
Okay, and then just one more thing, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So, when it comes to discussing that previous budget and having this group coming in, or these possible two positions coming in based on the grant coming in, do you still stand by your statement that you feel that this school year will be covered and not have an issue like was brought up by, yeah, public comments during our budget discussions at the beginning, where the teachers were saying that they felt they were going to be overly stressed by not having those, the RBTs?
I'm, I'm hoping that through, you know, if our, say, for example, the preschool grant comes through, and I'm able to add some additional resources to our early childhood programming, that could offset some other expenses, and I could keep that school adjustment counselor at a school, that one position, the early childhood school adjustment counselor. And I think that would offset having those two positions eliminated, because I think that they have the capacity to train some of our paraprofessionals to provide that service. It's still not ideal, but I think that oftentimes, the RBTs do work hand-in-hand with our school adjustment counselors, and some of the training can come from them. So I think it'll offset it, yes. I'm not, I think this year, we have to keep a close eye on it. I'm not going to say I'm a hundred percent confident, no. I think there is definitely some of the things that we did have to discontinue, I'm sure some of the schools will be feeling.
Thank you.
Two things, the sharing of the track facilities, I'm just curious how that works, is that like mutual aid, so to speak, or professional courtesy, or is it fee-based?
Well, actually, so what happened, what's happening right now is multiple meets are happening at the same time, so some of those expenses for those meets are being shared amongst multiple schools.
But for like, Deconic to practice, or host the meet?
If there's, if they're on their, on their own, yes, there's a fee that they're, they can pay for it. It's nothing astronomical, but for the track meets, rather than two teams having a meet, four teams are having a meet at the same time. So the additional staff, the additional things you're paying for are being split amongst those two school, two home teams rather than just one home team, if that makes sense.
Right, right, and they pay for used facilities for practice.
Right, if it's something separate, yes, then there's like a use facilities fee.
Right, okay. And we were all, we were able to use Puget Valley's track free of charge for our whole season while we were for practices last year, so there is some.
Yeah, I didn't know if we just kind of helped each other out here, how that actually worked. And the other one, the, maybe I should ask this before we approve the grant, but that high-quality education materials grant, and maybe this will be answered in curriculum, but the new ELA program, is that coming, being paid for out of the grant, or what, what does that grant pay for?
So that grant pays for a portion of a K through eight, it does not pay for all of it. So that's why, because one of the, it was actually one of the select boards that asked me that question, why do you still have curriculum materials if you also pursue grants that will provide, such as that grant, some of those resources? And I said, and the answer is exactly what you were saying, is that it will provide a portion of it, it won't provide all of it. So it offsets the cost, and do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, the grant was written to support fifty percent of full implementation of one grade span in one subject. Whereas we know that we have to update curriculum in multiple subjects across multiple grade spans, but the, the grant was, for this time around, was one grade span, one subject, fifty percent of the full cost.
I'm trying to do math in my head here, and it gets a lot of zeros in there. So like, the full program cost is quite high.
Yeah, when we get to that, we can talk about, I mean, the K through five curriculum is, was about two-hundred-thousand dollars, and we had a hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and they're working with us to make it exact.
And that doesn't include the middle school program?
Or the teaching, or the?
Sometimes, sometimes it will include, it'll be a bundle, like some programs partially it'll be a bundle, some it's not, you pay separately.
And we're negotiating contracts in a way that we can best realize grant funding.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is that it?
That's it?
Can you see a motion?
We need a motion to approve it.
Oh. Oh, we don't have a motion?
We don't have a motion. Somebody, you know, if somebody was going to approve it or not, this is the same report. Can someone make a please, to approve the SOA plan?
Can I, well, she can't make a motion.
I can't, I can't.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the SOA plan. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any more questions, concerns?
And Ellen is on now.
So we have to do a roll call vote.
Sorry, guys, I can leave again.
Go after your report.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craig Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Eberwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Sorry. No, I know, it was like, it was confusing to me too, so, okay, so, give me patience, report the chair, obviously, it's, it's annual town meeting season, so every vote counts, we have two significant votes at the town meetings this year, so, you know, get your friends, make sure you're at those meetings, your vote counts, we've got the budget and the regional agreement. I don't anticipate, well, we passed the agreement, I don't anticipate any issues, but, you know, definitely going to be there. Well, there's a mistake here. Beckett meeting is not seven o'clock in the evening, it's two in the afternoon.
I sent an email to them, I sent an email to Westland at all to know that.
Just no mistake. So it'd be great if you folks were there to support the budget and the regional agreement at those meetings. I, I will be traveling and not able to go to a lot of those meetings until my own meeting on November fifteenth, so I won't be there to support that until that, so unfortunately. So, so next up is any questions, sir, sir? Okay, next up is the approval of the recommendation from DESI on the revised regional agreement, and we have Jay Berry from Marsh online for questions. If anybody has questions and concerns, we can talk about it now or after the, we read the motion, it's either way, or both. So, any questions for Jay on the DESI response? Yes, go ahead, Jay.
I, I thought the DESI response was pretty straightforward, there really wasn't a lot there, and what was there was very good. And I was surprised that some, they, they didn't have questions about some of the things that I thought they would have questions, some of them. There were a couple of things that are fairly innovative in the, the change, and I thought there would be questions about those, but we didn't get those. But I have a question for the Marsh representative, Jay. We're all going to be at the town meetings, and there, there should be some questions at the town meeting, one would expect some. What is the answer to the question, how does this agreement differ from what we've been operating under since about nineteen ninety-three? How are we going to operate differently if we are?
Well, there are a couple of, you know, because of the work of the RAC committee and the involvement of the school committees, a couple of things that are different. And in general,
sense, the agreement is in complete compliance with law and regulation as of 2024, which is helpful. The language on the budget and the apportionment of expenses is updated in a way that we hope is helpful in terms of it being a resource document. Another change is that, is the, there are two options for a town to withdraw now instead of just one. And, and so that's a, that's a change. In fact, that's where most of the edits were. So that, that's how I would answer the question. It's updated, it's refreshed, it's a little more understandable as a reference document and it has some of the priorities that the RAC committee pursued.
Thank you. Anybody else? Take?
Question for, for Jay. I'm curious in your experience, how you, what other regional agreements, what other school committees do to promote this to the towns? And do you have any recommendations on how we would go about selling this to the towns at town meeting? Representation, putting a small group together, taking to questions, any, any thoughts or suggestions on what you've seen done or what you would recommend doing?
Yeah, so it, it kind of varies by community and the extent to which everybody's already aware of the process. But it really helps, helps to have, if I can put it this way, the people on the stage aware and supportive of the document. And so it's really up to you. I mean, in one instance, I remember we, this was a two-town region, we did information meetings prior to town meeting and just walked everybody. In some cases, I'm trying to remember if there was, in one case, the attendance wasn't very good, another case it was. And we just walked everybody through the sections and talked about the changes. And in another instance, I remember we met with the select boards of the member towns and had people from the, from the agreement committee were with us. So it can take a variety of different forms, but it does help to have select board, FedCon, town council, to have them aware and to, for them to be in a position to support it.
And to, who would then be answering questions from the residents? For example, although I am a member of the regional agreement committee, I also serve as town moderator for Hensale, and so I will be in my role as town moderator and handing these questions off to other people to answer and not, not getting directly involved in answering questions.
Right. It, it would be, in one way or another, it'd be if you're not in a position to answer questions from the floor, it'd be nice to have somebody there who could, maybe another RAC member or school committee member. And then, in a couple of instances, we've gone to a town meeting or two ourselves, so that's, that's a possibility. I don't want to, you know, if it's not necessary, that's fine, but that's also something we've done.
Yeah, my, my thoughts are, I mean, we've worked hard on this, we've spent money on this. I think we should kind of perhaps put a, a small group together to, to go be there and answer questions and promote this and be informative to those residents during the meeting itself.
Yeah, absolutely. And if it can be ahead before the meeting, that's, that's all good. But yes, it's been a good process. We've, we've enjoyed this project and we have put a lot of work into it and it's a good document. So absolutely agree that it deserves support at town meeting.
Thank you, Jay. And thank you to Steve for both being working with us on this and helping us get it over the finish line. Probably be a few more years, we try to do that around here.
Yeah, that's okay. And you're very welcome. And again, we enjoyed it. If there is something else we can do, as you get into town meeting season, you know, reach out to me, one way or the other.
It starts next week, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one thing that I'm confused on. If you read the DESI site, in one place it says that if you change the regional agreement, it doesn't become effective until the July after the December approval by DESI. Is that, so this, I mean, let's, let's assume it's approved in all the seven town meetings. So this new agreement would not become effective until July 1, 2025. Is that correct?
No, I, I think, I, I'm not sure what document, part of the document you're looking at, but.
No, this was from the DESI site and I've read it somewhere else.
Okay.
A while ago.
Yeah, one of the edits that we had to do is that there was some ambiguity about when the document, when the agreement would take effect. And the original agreement had an and/or situation in it and they asked us to change it. We reached out to the superintendent about that. So if this is approved, it becomes effective on the date the commissioner signs it.
And Jay, just real quick, it will, I mean, I don't anticipate any delay in the commission signing once the seven towns approve it? Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, what's happened is that they've given preliminary approval and we've been informed that they're going to recommend that the commissioner sign off upon receiving notice that the towns have approved it. Yeah, so the document is good to go for our Department of Education's season.
Excellent, thanks.
I do have a question for you, but I just have a suggestion to the group. As we approach the annual town meetings, if there isn't an opportunity for a small group to get together, then we make an effort to have a document of talking points for anybody who attends the town meetings so that we're all giving a consistent message to the towns.
Excellent, yeah.
Kind of like a question and answer kind of thing?
We're getting you right on that talking point.
It could be touch.
Just for example, because there have been different dates that have been mentioned and according to what we were working from the regional agreement committee, the last signed and approved document from DESI was dated 1958.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. And so we need to be clear on that, that it, it was before I was born. Thank you very much. So.
Yes, but it was amended nine times since then. I mean, it had been amended with region, with ed reform in 1993. So I think that was about the last approved amendment. I mean, we had additional towns, were added, different dates were added. So there were nine amendments and the last one was after 1993. So to say it's a 1958 document is misleading. I mean, there, we only had four, four towns in the, the region in 1958, I think. I wasn't around either. And obviously, we're at seven now. And there were all sorts of changes, I mean, since 1958.
I can comment there.
The difference is that there was the official copy on record at DESI was 1958.
But DESI didn't exist, you know, until 1994 or something like that. So they, they lost their documents.
Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, one of the other advantages to having an updated agreement is that this document has gone through the whole process and has been preliminarily approved by DESE. And that is not the case with all of the previous amendments that have taken place. And I think it's, Dick is right that these things happened and they had to happen, but not in all cases did they go all the way up to the state level for approval. And this sort of takes care of all of that and takes it off the table.
Any other questions? Well, we have a motion here.
Yeah, I do need to vote the agreement again.
Okay. Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the changes to the regional agreement made by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to the proposed amended regional agreement that the committee previously approved on February 15, 2024.
That's it.
Okay, motion in second. Any more questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Definitely.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Thank you, Jay and Steve and all the people who worked on this, the RAC committee, Todd. I mean, monumental effort for almost two years now. Nice job, everybody. Let's get it over the finish line of the towns. That would be great. Thank you.
That's six, seven towns, three quarters.
I think so, yeah. Yep.
All right, luck with your town meetings.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so next up is curriculum.
Hi, everybody. Curriculum met last night on Zoom where Assistant Superintendent Hanol gave us the, what, which ELA curriculum was selected as a new K through eight curriculum. We went over again that Wit and Wisdom and EL, and EL. And they were piloted by two separate groups made up of 11 teachers, both in elementary and middle school. Then both groups filled out the Massachusetts curriculum rubric to give feedback on each program and how it would fit into Central Berkshire. The piloted groups then sat with the curriculum council to hash out which program would be best. The curriculum council was made up of parents, one of which was a reading specialist in a neighboring district, some teachers, building administrators, including Principal Rom and school committee member Dr. Crapreese. The original premise was to select one curriculum for K through eight. However, the decision turned out to be split. Wit and Wisdom was selected as the K through five curriculum as it has a part in it called GEO that fits in nicely with the current ELA supplemental program foundations that the district did not want to part with due to the solid foundation it gives to our early readers. And then the EL program was selected as the K, six through eight curriculum as feedback from the Massachusetts teachers indicated that this program was better for the middle school. The program gives teachers a little more autonomy in its teaching and the themes for the program were better aligned with Central Berkshire. District is okay with the flipped curriculum because the skills taught by and, and the instructional, instructional strategies given by both curriculums are similar, so it was felt that there would not be a curriculum continuity issue. Both curriculums use texts that are based in science and social studies, which gives the added benefit that, that it is building knowledge bases in other subject matters while teaching ELA foundations and skills. Both curriculums also use real books, not just textbooks, and this aspect seemed to really engage the students at all levels. Professional development will start on May 17. The district will have three years of PD with one, with the first year being completely in person. As we discussed, the grant will offset a good chunk of the K through five program with funding also coming from what was earmarked for curriculum costs in the budgets. And the, the subcommittee unanimously voted to recommend the adoption of both programs through the full school committee. And I see that there is approval for the new ELA curriculum in the agenda, but I don't see a full motion. So are we voting on this tonight?
I have the full motion.
Oh, you do? Okay. So Barbara, would you go ahead and read it?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the adoption of Wit and Wisdom in grades K through five and EL education for grades six through eight as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Okay, motion in a second. Any questions on this? Seeing none here enough. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Go ahead, Leslie.
I just, I, oh, I'm sorry, Ellen, you had more to say.
No, I said, I said awesome, but do you want to touch more on the curriculum or is this going to have more to do with the next portion of what we discussed in curriculum last night?
No, I, I, all I wanted to say is I wanted to thank our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Michael Hanol, because the, the work he did on this was amazing. It was thorough. It was, the teachers were just, they were so engaged. Like the, the feedback that we got from teachers when we shared what this looked like with other districts that had done similar work, they were just really blown away by the level of engagement and participation and the positivity on the part of our teachers. So I was so appreciative of his leadership in this area and I'm excited about it. So that's all I wanted to say.
And I'm, I'm really glad to know that both of these curriculums use real books and not just excerpts in a textbook. I did see an email come through from my daughter's ELA instructor where they were referencing that they're learning, reading The Night Circus. And I read that book last year. It's just awesome. So I think it, it, it just helps give kids a better appreciation of, of a full book, rather than just learning how to write an essay or reading excerpts and paragraphs. And then, so the next thing we did was we got also an update from the Superintendent Hanol on the new Science MCAS. Current Science MCAS needs to fill in multiple choice questions. The state is making a new MCAS task based in part on multiple choice questions and then class-oriented questions to gauge how well students can apply science standards. This change is based on the thought by the state that all districts will be changing to a new science, will be changing to new science curriculums that focus on inquiry-based science models that has children apply science and engineering standards and concepts to real-world issues. This new MCAS is being piloted this current school year for grades five through eight, but see, our Central Berkshire is not one of the piloting districts. The anticipated rollout for this new MCAS will be the 2024-25 school year. And as a consequence, our district will now need to find a new science curriculum rather quickly. And that was all we've discussed. But our next meeting will be, is set for June 4th at 7:00 PM on Zoom where Assistant Superintendent Michael Hanol will outline the process and timeline for selecting said new science curriculum.
Okay. Any questions? Is that it, Ellen?
That's it.
That's enough. Thank you very much. Good work. That was plenty of work. Thank you. Okay, next up is finance.
All right, so we met twice since our last full committee meeting and on March 18th, where we reviewed the fiscal year 2025 town meeting informational review. We discussed the informational packet that was provided to towns, highlights the key budget areas and details of the town assessments. We also reviewed the fiscal year 2023 audit review. Tom Scanlon of Scanlon and Associates presented the results of his firm's audit of Central Berkshire Regional School District's 2023 financials. The overall assessment was that Central Berkshire is a low-risk district with very good controls in place. He complimented our sound management in these areas and there were no penalties in our E and D and no large surpluses or deficits, which would, which overall lowers our risk profile. So it was a good, it was a good report. A lot of thanks can be sent over to Greg for that. And we also talked about in that meeting how the new, newer hire, Jennifer Radwitch, over there was a major asset in the finance department. On our next meeting on April 23rd, we had some comments from the audience. On our next meeting, on April twenty-third, we had some comments from the audience around Policy three, four, eight, five. And I have a motion for that. I kind of cobbled one together. I'll save that for after the rest of the report. Get back to that. We also reviewed, the comments from the audience at the time were that it was very difficult for, to find a substitute nurse when a role, when the role was needed based on current rates. And we'll address that in a minute. We also looked at quarter three expenditure report, ending on March thirty-first. We are about sixty-nine point two-nine percent through our budget currently. Overall, district expenditures should be around seventy-five percent, but it has to do with accounting between the full year, how long teachers get paid and when the actual school year ends. So we are very much so right on track. Greg let us know, too, there is an insurance premium holiday in June, but there likely will not be one next year. We also reviewed the building maintenance capital plan, where we looked at sort of a five-year outlay of property and equipment improvement plans, where it was indicated that school roofs should most likely be the priority, with Beckett-Washington Elementary being the major priority in terms of their roof, which has been patched several times, but continues to leak and continues to cost us a lot of money. The discussion continued around exploring possible use of solar panels, where there might be certain funding to get solar on the roofs and have them fix the roofs at the same time. And we also talked about MSBA funding in twenty twenty-six for roof repairs and other high-priced items. Finally, we also got an update on rural aid. It sounds like it's still being worked through Massachusetts government. Originally, it was proposed at fifteen million. It looks like the House approved seven point five million, which is half. So it's something that still isn't fully official yet, but something we're paying attention to. Our next meeting is May twenty-first, six thirty. Kona Learning Corp. comes. So I have a motion around the Policy three, four, eight, five, which is temporary substitute teachers. It was updated in June twenty twenty-two to allow the committee to look at substitute rates each year. The current rate for substitute nurses is twenty-five dollars an hour. So I have a motion, be it resolved, that Central Berkshire Regional School District approves effective April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, in accordance with District Policy three, four, eight, five, that substitute retired school nurses with active licenses, rates be increased to twenty-nine dollars an hour, for the first ten substitute, the first ten days before long-term substitute rates come to an end.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions, discussions? Sir, Amy?
How does that match with the rest of the county?
So it's in line. Different districts are much higher, other ones are lower. We're kind of right in the middle with rates.
With the twenty-nine?
With the twenty-nine. Each district does have a rate for RNs and then with, with the school nurse license or retired nurses. At the time we last updated this, we did not have any retired nurses that were coming back. So we did not update it. We do have some that are looking to sub again. So we thought we'd increase it and set it in terms of.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapris?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. That is all. That's it. Thank you. Nice job. Oh, sir?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
No, you can't. Go ahead.
I mean, I accept that. The capital expenditure is roofs and whatnot. So you're starting to take a look at this. You're not signing a timeline or estimated costs or anything at this point. Is that correct?
There's a spreadsheet that we were shown that has sort of a five-year outline of all the different schools. And I believe Greg's in process of making it more user-friendly to look at.
We'll get it.
So then actually, at our next meeting, we're going to be looking at it again, at a little, a little easier way to look at, and then we're going to start kind of grouping things together and how we can address them.
And then, will that be?
Then at that point, I think we'll be a little user-friendly.
Yeah.
Yes, estimating costs and all the different projects and things that need to get done.
Yeah. I think it's important that we let the towns know so that they can plan accordingly to these capital projects that have to be done ultimately. The other thing was about rural aid. And Bonnie and I attended the MAS C legislative session on that. Now is not a good time to talk about that, Rich, though?
Okay, sure.
So there was, there was a lot of talk on rural aid. And Bonnie, fill me in. Correct me if I'm wrong here on any of this stuff here. There was a few things regarding rural aid and state budgets that they're kind of anticipating like a billion-dollar deficit shortfall in the budget. There's a big billion-dollar rainy day fund. So what the representatives were talking about is that although it appears to be perfectly legal, that we really shouldn't be using rural aid funds to reduce costs to the towns. And what they talked about was that we really need to tighten up the budgets and really keep an eye on cost, particularly with these kind of shortfalls coming through. The fair share amendment, they're trying to use about half of that on education, half of that on infrastructure, and I'm assuming transportation there. Representative Benny Picnichelli, he did comment that the chapter seventy formula is flawed. It's been flawed for a long time. And did some opinions on that. They did mention foundation budget being a problem. The, there was, you talk about, not necessarily vocational, but trade schools and stuff. But the big one was really rural aid. And I did find, when I was emailing Rich about this afterwards, there was a report from DESI to the Joint House Ways and Means, Senate and House Ways and Means, that there was a recommendation, instead of doing a three-year plan on rural aid, that there would be a year-end report instead. So it was just a recommendation from DESI. Hopefully it makes things easier for you. But that was, that was a big one, was just rural aid and watching those budgets and trying not to use that so much for, for funding, you know, regular operating expenses. Did I miss anything?
You got it. Senator Mark was present as well, and said as a former resident of the group, he understands the need for rural aid, especially in the western districts. That was very clear in this group, that that was a big concern.
And Leslie, Representative Tricia Farley-Bougier commented about Pittsfield. They were counted as two students short, which cut out, was going to cut out roughly two million dollars or something. Two million, thank you.
Two million.
And they did stress to go over the numbers and count, because there was like a thousand students across the state that are not counted appropriately when it comes to this funding. So they did stress to definitely go over these student counts and make sure we're getting everybody.
And that was for the low-income students?
That was, yes.
Yes.
Thanks for.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for going there, buddy.
Yeah.
I canceled the meeting just so you could go there.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. You know, I just need to get my meeting in.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
So that's it for finance. So next up is policy.
So we had to officially cancel our meeting. It was supposed to be at the beginning of April. So we have not met since we last met as a full committee. We are meeting next Wednesday, May first, at Nassau case, at six thirty.
Okay. Personnel?
We have met. A little background. When we approved the budget, we approved staffing, you know, numbers of all of our employees. And by virtue of that, you get the class sizes and all of the things that we've been talking about tonight. We have a policy that says if employment is changed after, if we hire individuals after approval of the budget, school committee has to approve it. The administration can't just go and spend money that's not, hasn't been approved. So the superintendent brought a proposal to personnel, and I will read that, the motion that applies for that. Be it resolved, which is slightly different than the proposal that's in the agenda. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee uses a grant from Berkshire Taconic Foundation to partially fund a middle school position in FY twenty-five to concentrate on middle school students that have fallen behind academically, with the balance of the cost of the position's salary and benefits to be funded from the rural aid grant. So I think that's pretty self-explanatory, but probably the superintendent wants to give some more justification for this.
So I have.
Shall we second it?
Yes. Great. Motion is taken.
Wait, two seconds, isn't it?
Yeah.
You do further. Just a little bit of background. We, Mike and I have been in conversations with Principal Robb at the high school and with Principal Vosberg at the middle school. And one of our concerns, ongoing concerns, particularly since COVID, and we had some very instructional models, has been a small, I would say a smallish group of students that we can begin to identify around grade seven and eight going into the high school, that are really struggling in some core areas in ELA and math. And they may or may not be diagnosed as students with disabilities, but some of the, some of the profile that we're looking at would be students, you know, when we looked at it, really looked at this group of students that we have concerns about, and what those attributes of those students were, were things like absenteeism. I would say anywhere from, we identified three to five years below grade level in reading. And math, we definitely, some failure rates in math, failing ELA and math on their report cards. And there are, there can be a variety of reasons. There's also students that are struggling with mental health, with their mental health, social and emotional issues, and really seeing if we could come up with programming that would serve these students. We did some, I've done some research, Mike's done some research. There have been other programs close to us. One was called a Bridges Program in Chicopee that really were very tailored towards some of these at-risk students. And what we're trying to do is identify them in middle school so that by the time they do enter high school, in ninth grade, they have to pass the Bio MCAS. Tenth grade, they have to pass the ELA Math MCAS. And if you have worked with any of these students, and you have worked with them, and they are taking their reading or math MCAS or Bio for the fourth or fifth time, it's pretty, it's pretty tough. So what we're trying to do is really identify this. It's a small group, I would say. It's a small group, probably ten students. It's not a lot. And so we wanted to have, you know, we can't, we met over the vacation, and we're trying to decide what is our priority area for these students. We looked at some research, and we decided that, you know, targeting absenteeism, connecting these students to the community, doing some community connections can be very valuable for students that are at risk. And, and did we want some, some reading instructions, literacy instruction, math instruction that was very specialized to students, not necessarily lowering it, but actually having high expectations, but at the same time, you're providing foundational skills while at the same time ensuring that these students are receiving instruction that is consistent with the state-level frameworks and standards. So these, we received a grant for thirty thousand dollars from the Taconic Foundation to support an individual for that, to do that. We would love to have a full-time person. We brought it to personnel. Our configuration of this, we're thinking right now, and again, we've met several times, most recently over the holiday, or the spring break, is to have some instruction that might, a longer block of ELA instruction, very, very strategic, with some math, with some social-emotional learning support. But those students would be integrated with their peers through probably two, I would say probably two-thirds of their day, is that what we?
Yes, three, three periods of the middle school schedule.
So, so that's, that's why this is, so our hope is, and we may not need this programming forever. It would be more of a pilot year. This may be, you know, that we're going to, we'd like to try it. We'd like to, we want these students to be able to successfully transition into ninth grade. I think we know, retaining a student in eighth grade, the research around retention when students are in middle school really just adds to their, the burden of what they're already bearing in terms of not struggling in, in various areas. So we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we're supporting them as much as we possibly can. This is what the state will sometimes call, and it's in this SOA grant that I was referring to, as you're, you know, you're, I don't, nobody wants to refer to it as the lowest twenty percent, but there's this targeted population that is struggling. We don't want anybody to be there, to be honest with you. And we, so that's what, that's what that funding is for. I am so appreciative, or we are, that you can't imagine the voices from Principal Robb and Vosberg when they heard that this, the Taconic Foundation had reached out with this amount of funding and said, gifting, gifting this to us for a year. So that's sort of the history behind it, the rationale behind it. Do you want to add to that?
I just, I wanted to reiterate and just highlight the, the common denominator. We sliced the data for hours and looked at, looked at it from multiple angles, sorted it, sorted our students multiple ways. And in the common denominator for all of our highest-needs kids was that the reading levels that were below third grade, and that, down to like first grade. And so, and that's, and so that is what we talked at last meeting. I know Charlotte brought up the reading interventionist that we had talked about curriculum subcommittee, but we just, it really hit home for all of us when we, as we looked, sorted through this, this lowest-performing group of students, that we really do have a group of students who are reading far below grade level and need specific support. So this is a great way to identify early students that we know have a high chance of dropout at the high school and start targeting early, it's early seventh grade, and hopefully make some progress with the reading that is probably part of the reason why attendance behavior and classroom grades are also not great. So I'm excited about this.
Yeah.
We can't get them in sixth grade?
Our, so it's in, so our sixth grade is, the data looks a little, if we remember when we looked at our MCAS presentation, our six, current sixth-grade cohort is, or our current fifth-grade cohort coming up is, is a little bit stronger, and the numbers were lower. So because we want to keep it into that like eight to ten range, so it's manageable for one person to do the work, we're going to start it, and we're hoping to be able to expand it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crapris?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakatell?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. Anything else, Jeff?
No.
No.
That's it, thank you. Okay, next up is safety and wellness.
Well, we were originally supposed to meet tonight, but someone made us change our meeting. So we're going to be meeting next week on the second via Zoom to discuss third quarter bullying and infractions report with Leslie as well as sports safety protocols.
Thanks, sorry about that. Next up is Wacona Building Project, nothing to report there. Agreement ad hoc, I'm assuming there's nothing to report there. Oh, go ahead, Dave, sorry.
We're going to bring this up again. Considering that we have votes coming up starting Friday for this, just wondering if we're planning on putting a group together that's going to have talking points or go to meetings or have a consistent message to bring forward after all the work that we've done and all the money we've spent on this, to have a group to go promote this, to go answer questions at town meeting.
I think Bonnie's suggestion of talking points is a really great idea. I do think that, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but I do think that the school will be represented at every town meeting between myself, Leslie and, and Mike and Greg. I think, is that a fair statement to say? One of us, one of us will be at every town meeting. So we'll have that support there. But I think the talking points is a great idea. I'm not sure if we have, well, I certainly don't have the time. But if we had time to put together some people that are interested in getting together, I don't want to create an ad hoc group, but maybe if people are interested in getting together and being a cohort that goes around to speak to those talking points as well as the administration. I'm not opposed to that. But I think it really is up to us as individuals maybe to get together if anybody wants to take charge of that. I don't know.
Sorry, go ahead. Just I'll defer. I just wanted to add that in each town, there were people from the select board or the finance committee who were present and participating in our RAC. So even those people will be present hopefully, who can speak to it as well. It's not just on us, is what I wanted to say. Very specific RAC committee was made up of lots of constituents.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And if you know those people in your towns, and I'm thinking of Liz in Windsor to make sure.
Doug?
Doug and Scott.
Doug, make sure Doug's there, yeah. You know, he's present to speak to it as well. And, you know, so if we, you know, go to our town meetings and be there to talk to it would be great, for sure.
So to your point, Barbara, I made sure to contact the RAC representative from Peru. She usually travels during the summer, but she has guaranteed me that she will be at the town meeting because this will be talked about. I will be there. I also have been very active in going to select board meetings to make sure that our select board is aware of the documents that will be emailed to them. One of them said it was pretty lengthy, but they are going to be talking about it on Monday. So, you know, I'm just saying, we need to be as ambitious.
Hold on, active.
Proactive to get the RAC team there at meetings.
Personally, I hope there's not a lot of questions.
And if the select boards are reading the documents that were sent to them, there's not a lot here that was questioned or even commented on by DESI. So it should be, hopefully, a none of them.
As far as putting together some talking points on this, I don't know if maybe I could draft something that we can do something collectively to get something out to the full committee and maybe send out to the select boards ahead of time in the next week or so.
The other thing just to mention is that Representative from the Berkshire Eagle did reach out to Rich and I. And we'll probably be talking to them tomorrow. We have to look at our schedules. So if you do see an article in Berkshire Eagle about the regional agreement, that also would help. I'm sure we get the word out.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Good, thank you.
Please superintendent evaluation ad hoc.
We did not meet, but we will be meeting in middle of May or early June.
Pretty much any old business? Any new business?
I would, I would like a response about what the one student had brought up today for public comment. Just is that something that could be a stipulation in, in their physical education options?
We, we would.
Change policy. Yeah, I told, I told them I, that I would, I would meet with her on Tuesday while I'm at Wacona and I'll bring that to policy. That's why I left when I made.
Hold on, take that, take that, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, I remember that, that situation was discussed. And I thought, I mean, years ago, I mean, this is not a new issue. And I'm surprised that it came up. And I'm surprised it came to the school committee. And she has good grounds, in my opinion. So I'm, something, something's dropped between the chairs somehow.
That's what, if you ever talk with her and with, with Principal Rob, we'd be able to work that out.
I just wanted to say that I didn't have to take a visit in college because I was on the Vosber team.
I didn't have to go to school.
I mean, it only makes sense.
I know, I agree, I know.
Thanks. So you guys are going to address that, right? That's cool. Yeah, I imagine it's in the policy or is it a state mandate, probably? Okay, any other new business? Remarks for the group?
Yes, I have remarks. I don't know if you know about it, How We Shall Live is something going to be going on at Stationery Factory in Dalton from April 29th through May 12th. And it's climate visions of the Berkshire youth artists. It's eight, eight schools, eight high schools throughout Berkshire County. I'm sure that Wacona is one of the high schools because it's, it's in, it's in Dalton. So just be aware, Stationery Factory, April 29th to May 12th.
I believe Mesicus is as well, Mesicus is as well, the middle school is as well.
Oh, great.
Yeah, thank you.
I was going to mention Into the Woods as well. And I echo everything that everybody has said. Couple of things that impressed me. First of all, that was the largest cast we've ever had, I think. And that, that is super to involve such a team. And the other thing, we always compliment the students and yada, they should be complimented. But my God, what the advisors had to have put into that. Just mind-blowing in my estimation. And I wish I, I could name a couple, but I know I'd leave, I wouldn't be accurate and leave somebody out. So my, my congratulation goes to the staff as much as anybody. And, and I certainly, I felt exactly the same way about the facilities. I mean, I'm so glad that we had the best facilities we could afford, so.
And there's a sense of pride when I walk in there. I can see the way I just felt so proud that this is our school and our students are performing in this amazing facility. It's really, it's wonderful.
Motion to adjourn? Second, second, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crackeries?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Bonnie Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Nice work.
Bye, everybody.
There you go.